Okay, so I'm gonna call the May twenty seven twenty twenty five meeting on the planning board. First agenda, I have minutes for May thirteen, but you're on the backside of the agenda.
Except for the one I printed out. Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Uh, second.
Is there any discussion? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll get an email written.
Do we know what his status is for the board?
Little.
Make a motion to, we can do one more. Two more meetings, I believe, it's gonna be before July first, is when the fiscal year starts.
I believe so, well, although normally it's done the meeting following the lectures.
It normally is, but there again, what's normal?
Motion, uh, this name is instruction.
And I made a motion to postpone it to the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have a more member. Yeah, a second, it's okay, that's me.
Is there any discussion on that one? Fair enough, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, special permit update, last pre-holdings, they have asked to be put up until the next, uh, meeting.
Well, it'll be interesting to, hopefully someday if they have them in there, so we can have a discussion. I'd like to know what's been the holdups on that thing, I'm gonna ask because it's almost a year.
Okay, next item discussion, I like it, site plan approval.
But I, I have to accuse myself as a planning board member because I'm a neighbor. But I still wanna make a. On your, on the second page of that, there's my question. Was there any mo- uh, modifications to that?
I don't believe so.
But do we know? This is when, when it goes before town meeting, and then it has to go to the attorney general, and when it comes back, there may be altercations or anything like that. And it's written in there that. And I wanna make sure that it is right.
What's that?
When the attorney general has anything to say, uh, you know, it has to be changed. Yes. And it's up to Anita to, you know, to make those changes.
All are sent there as individuals?
It, it all goes there.
No, the original bylaw, just the, just the bylaw. Oh, oh, we're talking about the bylaw, not talking about why I like that. No, not site plan, no.
This is, this is the site, the site plan, where it was written.
I don't see what this footnote is particularly important about.
Well, that's what I mean.
With a notification made to the town for. I would assume they didn't shoot it down, because right.
No, but they, if they make changes, it has to be.
Known.
Known and done.
Yep.
As. I hate to try to trust you by memory, but as I recall. They did not require any changes, they did include some cautions. That's the best of my recollection.
It should be so modified in, uh, yeah.
So, I can go check with Anita.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. Okay.
Okay, uh, so, back to what I like here. Was it observed that there was a major parking problem at a recent event?
Um, so, Sunday of Mother's Day, we had, I'm, month in May this year, over the thirty year average is over a hundred percent over. If you're driving up the driveway, you'd see that we've got six acres cleared there, four additional parking. Uh, we still have to put in tile drainage, the fields have been too wet to get on to be able to do that, will be over a hundred fifty thousand dollars into that. What we're running into on the left-hand side of the driveway, at least that from Dick's, uh, nephew. But we, we have two drainage culverts on our property that the pile of wood chips that's down at the bottom is stopping it all, so. Last week, I spoke to Jonathan, he allowed us to go in and put another eighty feet of drainage pipe in there because the chips that were dumped there is not allowing us to use the bottom one-third of parking, so. Uh, Mother's Day between Friday and Saturday being closed, we've been very cognizant on the fact of, you know, we're trying to maintain the fields for long term, we're not trying to get cars stuck on it. And then we had our artisan festival, so it was the perfect storm on Mother's Day of weather, artisan festival, um, and it being Mother's Day, so. Um, we saw the turnout there, um, I reached out to the police chief afterwards, the, um, one of the lieutenants came down, we talked, we had six staff, uh, working on it, said, you know, any direction that you can give us, we, like, we are used to big events, like. We did not, besides the bonfire last year, which we've been planning ahead for this year, like, we, we have not had to park in the road, we're really limited on our parking with the bottom area being a mess, having to rectify that, and then also just not being able to finish the other parking lot. So we saw that when I spoke to the police chief last week, uh, we went ahead and, um, last, uh, previous Friday, we scheduled, I, two detail cops for this Sat- this previous Saturday that we had. One was scheduled from two to six, one was scheduled from three to seven, um. The chief reached back out on Friday that one of them was gonna be able to do it, wasn't able to fill the other, so I said, okay, not a problem, but, um, at three thirty on Saturday, the other, we did not have the other one, so I. I called Rutland to ask what was going on, and they weren't able to fill it internally, so it was out of town, but the per- they didn't have an answer on why the person showed up, because when we had discussed it, Mother's Day on Sunday, the answer was, you know, if you work, I'm trying to have a detail cop down here, so. We were able to, again, mobilize staff, use the radios, high vis vests and stuff to be able to try and do it, but we were kind of planning on the fact that we would have eight detail cops, this previous Saturday was not to the extent that, um. Turnout was not like Mother's Day was, but I, another thing that we kind of just openly do run into is we do have, um, a field, a four acre field on the corner of Overlook Road that it's Dick's family's. Would prefer that we not have people over on it, so I do, I do run a fine line of kind of balancing neighbors, I could have parked all my staff and the vendors on the dry spot of that field, and we probably wouldn't have been going down into Watuuset Street, so, um. And as far as kind of that goes into place, like, I don't know if you wanna talk to Jonathan Lauren, but they have, kinda, as we've talked, that they would prefer, and even though I own the field, I am trying to be cognizant of not having cars going down Overlook Road, but. I think for right now, there is not.
They come down anyway, it's a turnaround, and.
Um, if, if that bottom of the field, if that third hadn't been flooded, would there have been overflow onto the street?
No.
No?
No, so in the past, we've always had that entire field, and then we, we had the two acres on the right, we've turned that two acres into six, but we're not able to use any of that six right now, until we can get seed on it and finish the, the tile drainage. We, like I said, I mean, we, we have seen, th- this previous Saturday was not a crazy day compared to like a busy Disco Lemonade, Midnight Riders last year, it's just the fact of limited parking because it is such a swamp, and you, you start getting cars on it, and.
So at the end of this, so you have to wait to put in that drainage, and you also have to wait to put in seed and have that germinate and all that, um. When do you foresee that happening, is there, is there a thought as to what we're gonna do in the meantime, like with, with bonfire, um, actually, I was, I was talking about with my wife, any thought of people parking somewhere like, uh, say Glenwood School and shuttling them?
Uh, we've had a lot of conversations between Randy's fields and stuff. Honestly, I, I don't foresee another event coming up, I'm hoping that one, the bot- now that we got that temp- the, not temporary, but the drainage done at the bottom into the wood chips, that will open up the entire field for us moving forward if it doesn't continue to monsoon. I think we've got a couple different options when it comes to bonfire, we know that like bonfire, I think, going from two to six acres, it is both of, it is my intention, Randy's assisted in part of the process of like, when we're trying to figure out parking right now, and getting that big field up and going, we are really shooting for bonfires when we hopefully be able to get on it, I mean, sooner would be nice, but. That is the next event, it's kind of thought that like, we, we will see turnout.
And how far away is that, is it three weeks?
Um, thirty, twenty.
Twenty-eight. The, the, the challenge that you have is, right, it's unforeseen, unless you pave it, unless you gravel it, we got prices on gravel and that, you, we can't afford to do it, right, so.
I don't wanna see it, it kinda ruins the whole, yeah.
And, and, and there's not, in my opinion, as Randy Jordan has been to give, there's, he, he is losing more because he's parking on Watuuset Street, and. Safety issues or other challenges there, and there's nothing saying that he can't park on the road, right, the cops show up, then there's cars on the road, and you've got a thing to it, but every business, every birthday party, cookout that you have, they park in the road, you can park on the side of the roads, there's nothing saying you can't, in my opinion, right? As a whole to do that, you're far better off shuttling, but you and your wife and the two kids come up, are you gonna park at Glenwood School, hop in a shuttle bus that Ryan pays for, and go over there? Eh, maybe, otherwise you're turning around and you're leaving, right, and that's just mad at cost that he doesn't need, you know, kind of thing, is what he's gonna do.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely understand that, and I, I personally hope that, that your business continues to boom and that you draw in more people, I think it's good for the town. On that same hand, though, the town has been very resistant to commercial, and I think you're a wonderful commercial for the town, and I don't, I fully, I fully agree with you, you have a right to park in the road, correct. Is that always the best scenario? No. I like that you're, you're throwing out other ideas and you're willing to, to work with it, um, 'cause I, I do want to see you guys do well, but I wanna see all the neighbors as happy as possible as well, and I know that's, that's living on a fairy tale, um. But depending on, if you're open to it, depending on how these next couple weekends go, if you're, I mean, you guys have been hammering on social media, uh, from what I, I hear from my wife, and that, if that generates a lot of business for you, and that's a need going forward. I'd like to know that you guys are open to handling that in some sort of amenable way, where you can still make money, where you're not underwater because of busing costs.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, that property makes up about twenty percent of our business, so we do have a large advertising spend on social media, that's our meat, home delivery, that's not people going up to the farm. I mean, we're amenable to just about anything, I'd like to think that we're not going down into the road, like I said before, like, I'm fine with hiring a detail cop, it would have been ideal if they were there, because you know, when.
Yeah.
When they were there, I went down on Mother's Day, hey, any direction that you can help try and give, you know, they mentioned concerns about being up towards sixty-eight, so even though we didn't have the detail cop today, I was saying. Set, telling the guys down there, sending them up further, keep sending them up, that, try and let everyone know, try and get over the white line as much as possible, try and keep them on one side before we're going to the other side. I mean, we, we know what needs to get done, we just, I mean, we need the weather to cooperate in order to get the field, but like, it, it, it's not idea, like, I am the one that's down at the bottom of the driveway, and every person that's telling me this is wonderful as they're walking up the driveway, I'm thinking like, I would rather we have enough cars for up there, and that extra couple. Grand that we're maybe bringing in is not worth it to me at that point, because it's the, it's the added headache of having to coordinate going back up and down, I don't, like, it's not. We don't, we don't have a short term right now besides still continuing to try and get a detail cop, I mean, we have no problem putting, putting bodies on, like, helping park the side of the roads, I can send five individuals down to try and help do it, but. I mean, we just, we need to get our long-term parking, like I said, I'm hoping to fix at the bottom of the driveway, and if we have that main parking field that we have had for the last three years, and if we're able to utilize all five rows there, we're not gonna have an issue until possibly the bonfire, which we'll, we won't be ready for.
We'll have an issue probably, I mean, it's got something.
The whole main thing of it is, is it's because of emergency vehicles, fire trucks, anything, they either gotta go to Rutland from Princeton or from Prince- from Rutland to Princeton. And to try to get by, especially that, the first time, that was the, the real cruel time. And, uh, besides that, and people trying to get around, and you curse that too, you know, and. A little bit of that.
But that's partly out of, should Ryan's crew even be on the road, right, at the end of the day?
Yeah.
Whose liability it is, if I park my car there, and I'm walking my big bottom up the side of the road, right, and somebody hits me, whose fault is that, is it because Ryan told me to park there, is it the person driving the car, or is it because somebody's on the other side? There should be some, I mean, even if Ryan gets permission from the highway or the police to say, hey. Caution, drive slowly, right, cars on the road, people in the road, right, kind of thing, put some rumble strips across there when you got big things, they shouldn't have to do that, but yet, everybody wants to get out of the house, it's rained every weekend this year as a whole, right, I mean, you wanna do something if you can. But nobody understands that it rained six inches in the last three days, and then all of a sudden, it's a beautiful day on Saturday, and I'm gonna go up there on Sunday on Mother's Day, you gotta go, right, so. I mean, ideally, there should be satellite parking available somewhere, right, but will people use? That's the thing, I mean, you can park on sixty-eight, one side of sixty-eight I thought about, because I rode around this past weekend, you could physically do, and you could have a shuttle bus pick them up, right? That's probably safer than Watuuset Street, but sixty-eight is fifty-five, and if you've got somebody that's distracted. That's on a good day, I think that's, but you know what I'm saying, I mean, but you've got Glenwood School, but how do you go about getting permission to use Glenwood School, I mean, I think anybody can park there, but yet, jeez, everybody go to Glenwood School and park there, and we'll run a.
It's just an idea, I like the.
I thought the same thing.
I like the rumble strip idea, even though I don't really know how feasible that is, um, I'm just not a road engineer, um, but the idea that. That you guys are willing to, to think about it and work with this is, is good, 'cause I, I think, like you mentioned all the safety issues, having cars consistently parked on the road is a no-go, because. I can tell you on our road, it's, it's supposed to be a, a twenty, and people fly down that thing going thirty on their phone, and even in big trucks, like, it, I just, I would hate to think of somebody distracted driving down there with people with their kids walking back and forth. But, yeah, I think, hopefully you can make it, 'cause I, I agree with you, a satellite becomes a very big expense with buses and things, uh, assuming from the school budget that buses are expensive. And, and I don't necessarily want that to cut into the amount of people that are also coming, uh, and then deciding, screw it, I'm not taking a shuttle.
What we talked about that, right?
Well, also, Chris, Chris had mentioned that they're planning on repaving Watuuset Street from Princeton to sixty-eight this year, so sometime that's.
Maybe they can make it wider.
Well.
With a bigger breakdown lane so they can park there.
That's what I was. I don't think it is, but, but, hey, it would be nice for them to push it back a little bit, you know, the banking and what else.
See, I even thought about parking on Ridge Road, right, Ridge Road, if you park on one side of Ridge Road, but the Ridge Road is too narrow.
Yeah.
Right, then you could walk across the hayfield through Mr. Soderberg's property there at the corner, right up to the driveway there, and put a crosswalk in, I don't know how to go about it, but you get permission to put a crosswalk, they have a cop there, or blinky lights, and you could physically do that too, I mean, that's all potentially doable.
Yeah.
And I think I gotta leave, 'cause I gotta go to that other meeting.
The major problem is having reliable parking on site, obviously, right?
Yeah, I mean, we addressed that last fall, that's why we started.
Yeah, if, if, yeah, if the parking you have, is it adequate for all of your events?
If we get the, if you get the drainage in and all those things, yes.
I mean, yeah, and it is all sca- I mean, we started like this, the, the six additional acres was to address that this year, it's, it is just the fact that like, we are dealing with rain every single week.
And you are getting all of those drains put in?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we put it, we put in the temporary stuff on the lower part that backs up to the wood chips like we were talking about.
The tile drainage guy will be here and gone in three weeks.
And how well does that ensure that that parking area will be usable all the time?
For the price that we're paying, I hope to God pretty good, but they're putting in it twice, they're putting in it, 'cause I might do some of the cornfields or hayfields, and they're doing it forty feet wide, they're gonna do it twenty feet wide, and they're doing it twenty feet wide, and it's twice the cost of, of a cornfield, but essentially they're doing it twice as close to allow it to drain out more, but they gotta control where it going, right? So.
Correct.
Tile drainage has happened for years. The problem is they gotta have a, you know, there's four acres there that is newly renovated, that you gotta get some sod on, that's gonna take time. You know, it'll grow, it'll grow phenomenally in, in, uh, in wet weather, but yet you gotta build a, you don't wanna put ruts in it, so. It's being addressed to the best of its ability, and, you know, we're doing everything we possibly can.
You know, uh, Norm, do you have anything else, I was gonna add some stuff.
I was just gonna say, yeah, that, that's a plus, and I, I don't see we're going anywhere else.
You know, I was gonna say, you know, when this was written, you were expecting five hundred cars, um, you know, and that, so I, I like the venue, I like the fact that people go to your venue, I like that people travel to go to your venue too, which is pretty cool. Um, you know, there's not many places in town at all, I think, that have that benefit, so it's cool that, um, you're bringing in tons of people. You know, if it's getting a little hectic out there, you know, I would say my two cents is, um, I got a bunch of two cents, so I'll try to go through them without hammering them or, or going in one direction, not too far in one direction, you know, um. First off, if, if one car does it, you know, the next car will do it, so if I see, 'cause you know, people are like, it's hard to park, say you park in a city, you're lucky when a spot's open, you see a spot, you go for it, so it doesn't take long for like. Everyone to get into herd mentality and go for it and park on the side of the road, you know, so it's, seems, I don't know if a sign at the bottom of the hill that says like, no, obviously you guys just talked about being okay with parking on the side of the road, but if you put a sign that says, hey, you gotta come in and try to park. You know, if you s- you know, in, in a sign that says, don't park on the side of the road, right at the entrance, that way there's guidance, you know, 'cause if you leave it up to anybody to just kinda go, whoa, it's like going to the beach kinda thing, you know, like. You know, you can kinda, ah, let's get my car right here, you know, so that's one thing, it's possible, um, you know, d- does anyone know not to park on the road, or, not that it's not park on the road, but the inherent risk builds up. If you get a, a big, a big turnout, you know, more than five hundred cars, you know, I go up there, I'm gonna use one car, some people travel with two or three people in the car, which is good, but, but if you get a lot of people that just bring one car, you're gonna run out of space for the people, all, everywhere else, you know.
I mean, we went into this weekend with social media posts saying, please try and like, park as much as possible.
Oh, that's cool.
And you said you had somebody in a high vis vest at the end of the driveway with a radio?
I, I mean, when, when the detail cop, when I realized thirty minutes after that the detail cop wasn't coming, and I did call and say, you know, like, we are getting close to the road now, and we do end up in the road, it's because there's not additional parking, we realistically really need to be keeping that driveway completely open, we end up parking on one side. But it ends up biting us in the ass after, 'cause then you're trying to control people coming out from untop- up top, we're having to hold people down on the bottom, it's a better solution for us to then be shutting off the bottom of the driveway completely, so we are letting those cars come out and be down on the road, and that was the, after talking to the police department, just thinking, you know, if it's. Mother's Day aside, this last Saturday being able to control and just having two employees on each end of the road giving specific direction, pull off to the side as much as possible, we're gonna fill this street side first, keep going down towards Princeton, please, and pull onto that side, I think that that's kinda. I mean, we have the separate walkie-talkie channel, I'm typically stationed at the bottom of the driveway, it's not, it's, it's not like we're seeing more people, if we had, if that parking up top, like, I don't, I don't expect to keep having this, when that parking up top is fine, like.
It's too cheap, yeah.
Like I said, there's not other big events, the brew fest this last Saturday was a lot, we were also closed Friday again, Mother's Day, we were closed Friday and Saturday, like.
Yeah, yeah, and traffic control measures, I mean, I was gonna say too. Um, do you really have anyone telling people, and it's a lot, you gotta assign someone this job, but say you go to Watuuset Mountain in the morning, they don't let you park where you can park, they go.
Yeah, that's, that's what we do when we are parking up top, and know what it's gonna be, there's one person at the end of the road, another, I mean, the.
Yeah. Well, 'cause I'm just saying, i- if people's park messy, you're not gonna get your five hundred cars either, which is, you know, another, um, you know, what stinks for you guys in the end, you know, when people leave, yeah, spots open up, but if, if there's a lot of, if there's too much space, and I don't know if, if, if that's something that can make it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are fully try, like, this last Saturday, we parked on the riding, Dale's old riding ring down there, 'cause we know that's sure footing, we ended up having the staff park the driveway down to Overlook Road, like I said, we could, maybe, you know, this guy will feel, but like.
Yeah, he's helping you out. My other thing would be was, does, say, can you buy a couple pallets of sh- uh, four by eight, you know, uh, plywood, and dry, you know, do. Uh, maybe not for the parking spots, but, you know, so when the people go to leave, they can leave on plywood, you can pick it up if you don't wanna leave it up there all summer, just throwing it out there for when it gets nasty, you know, it's possible, it might keep the ruts.
Oh, we've, we've been looking at army mats that you can put out on the field and some stuff, where.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. Some thoughts?
Plywood wouldn't do it, but yeah, like, it's, it's really just that bottom, the bottom turnoff that I'm talking about, that like, I'm really hoping that extending the drainage pipe from where it was coming out, 'cause it was just all pooling right there.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't drive up there when it, it was that rainy, so I don't really, I don't have a visual on it, but you know, just, just some ideas, um, you know, I guess it's. I would say you can't really park in the road, but it's gonna be your risk versus nothing happens versus something. I would say you can't really park in the road, but it's gonna be your risk versus nothing happens versus something happens. I think if a cop is there and lets people park in the road, I think you're totally not gonna be liable for anything.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But I think if if the day comes where, say, that person isn't there, I, it it would be too, it would be pretty scary to run that risk, and I'm not saying you can't do it, but I'm just saying it's probably.
I think that that's why Saturday was pretty frustrating, cause I just, I tried to schedule.
Yeah. It's pretty stressful, yeah.
So, going forward, I mean, it sounds like if the field is, you know, plus the drainage put in and all that, your parking issues might be solved, might be. But with us still potentially getting much rain, have you looked into a detail for uh, bonfire and these other big events to make sure that you can get somebody locked down ahead of time?
I mean, it was locked down this last week, like, it it was filled, there was an officer out of Oakham, so yeah, I mean,
Yeah.
Right.
Bonfire, regardless of whether it's raining or not, we will have at least two detail cops there, and that's probably just at the discretion of what Chief Monica,
Okay.
like how many they actually want, but I would, I would rather have enough around for bonfire, but we would like.
Yeah.
Ra- Randy and I have like since, it was while the bonfire was going on last year that Randy and I started talking about, cause like typically the fire brigade and the scouts are helping with parking, we make a donation to them for their assistance for it, but
That's great.
We're trying to figure out, I, I do, I do some of Soderbergh's fields, Randy does some, like, they're, trying to figure out which options we have around, thinking that that, I mean, having that six acres on the right, once the drainage is in, even if grass starts poking up, but you know, it's not like insanely wet, this tile drainage, I mean, I've got friends out in the Midwest that like have it on all their fields, like it, like, when Randy and I were meeting, we got two different quotes, but talking to predominantly, there's a fairground down in Connecticut that put this in for their parking. Has not had any issues, but before parking every year was just a nightmare for them, so.
At the entrance, let's see, uh, it's not like it turns out, because never have I ever heard that done before, so this is. And the fields around, let's just face it, they're, they're always wet anyways and.
Yeah.
When you got quick dirt up there, it's not like, you know, it's not gonna hold a car when.
Well, it's not, it's, it's not gravel based, let's just put it this way.
Yeah. Yeah, pro and.
It's not good dirt for parking.
That's right.
But it is the land.
And there's eighty-five feet of blue clay on the top of that hill underneath.
Not much circulation.
No.
Yeah, runs off.
Yeah, I mean, I I, I'll tell you, this, this winter, when I saw you guys clear and all that, it crushed my soul. I was like, oh, no, but you know, if if that's what it takes to keep people safe when they're coming there, then that is what it is, I'm, I'm, I hope we can shy away from clear cutting more areas, but I also hope that we can get this up and running, cause it sounds like that should.
Yeah, I mean, the clear cut it, like, you also have to understand kind of the property lines too, if like the, the, the par- our current top parking field is not owned by me, like, that's a working relationships with the Williams family, but
Yeah. Right.
that's why extending over there, I mean, I think cl- clear cutting and getting more people up there is how I kinda was able to buy it and keep it from, uh, it, that property was going up for auction a week later, and I, like, it, there's thirty acres right there in the middle that probably would not be a parking field, it would probably be fifteen houses, but.
Hmm.
Which is something the town cannot afford.
But. But anyway, eh, exactly.
Yeah, because somebody might have been there while they watched them purr, this, but anyways, yeah.
Yeah, you got a good thing going, it's just, um, you know, I think you were, you're just getting nervous.
Oh, yeah.
He's a resident, obviously, in this case.
Because, trust me, when you hear the fire department, one of the gentlemen from Princeton says, oh my gosh, if we have to go over there,
Not the only one using the road.
we'll never make it in time, just try to save.
You know, and I'm sure maybe something you might do or just make it wide enough so they can cut a turn into there. You know, make sure people don't park right to the
Yeah.
edge of the driveway, cause I mean, that'd be like you said, it's.
I think that just goes back to the fact of like ideally, we're not parking the driveway, like the top is fine, but I would, I would rather be on one side of Watchus Street
If you got cones on, yeah. Okay.
than parking one side of the driveway and trying to navigate a car coming down, going back up.
Hmm. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, in the, like, before last year's bonfire, like every year we have security meetings with the fire, police, like.
Yeah. You shouldn't have to just do traffic stuff personally, you, you, you own the place, you should go have fun, you know, but.
I, but, I, I need to be, yeah, it needs to be made down there when we're dealing with that, because, I mean.
You put it. Yeah. Yeah, get everyone else do- doing all the other tasks, yeah.
You're on the line. Sure. Well, bottom line, it seems like you're trying to correct the situation. And I, I don't know, I guess my, my only final comment on this thing would be, I think we do need to be more careful when issuing these special permits and site plan approvals, that we get, we include in the conditions that, that, for example, parking or or any of the conditions be
Modified.
usable.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they be permanently usable.
Exactly.
I mean, kind of going back to, I think you made the point earlier of like it, we have weighed out very heavily, just stripping the top soil off and putting regrinds like the rest of the driveway. I would prefer to see that be a field that we can take a cut of hay off of than see them
Yeah.
a big gravel area.
Yeah, that, that, that's.
Yeah.
I, I personally.
That, that, that's a maybe, you know, I, I think it's a good point.
Well, if that's the, yeah.
I.
Uh, I'd like to see the green field better than ground asphalt, I said, but by the same token.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, this, this whole farm thing, this kind of resurgence during COVID and and everything, and yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd love to see it kept, like you said, like it able to to take some hay off it, just in case it fluctuates or anything like that, and it, it becomes a big environmental task, once you start putting regrinds and everything into it, then eventually getting it out or turning it back or whatever, so.
Is uh, is the land your rent for Mr. Williams? It's, it is one of the parking lots or?
Well, I, yeah, I rent it from his nephew, I mean, it, it is, you get to the top of the driveway, it is the one on the left, yeah.
Yes, it's a left. That's the one on the left? Yeah, which is the field, yeah, which is the field, yeah.
You're a camel.
Yeah, 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 that one to put in context is right around two acres or so, and up in, in the past,
Yeah. Yeah.
we have never had issues between that two acres and the bottom two, so, I mean, we'll continue to move forward with using that one as kind of the primary, but having
Yeah.
six instead of two, while we're doing this tile, we're also putting it in in that little field, that's kind of our corn maze field on the left-hand side, just as like,
Yeah, you never know.
they're here already, might as well have them kinda do it, but that, that gets wet as well, and everything just comes down the sides of the driveway.
Yeah, that's normal. Well, if it's not this year, next year, it'll really be in place and testable, you know, so.
Yeah, and I, I mean, it's easy for us to see, uh, like now looking at, we, we went through Brew Fest, like I look at this next weekend, like, Friday, we got Naqwa Basket Raffle, that's like, we're used to handling that, I think we're on like four years of that.
I see that.
We know, like, it, that's a normal crowd, but we can handle it, Saturday is the cornhole tournament for Brent Carpenter, but like,
Yeah. Yeah.
those things, none of those, we're expecting to be a disco lemonade combined with a Brew Fest on the Saturday.
Yeah.
The bonfire will come up, but we will be ready for it, and it will, I mean, we will keep in mind that like, if, if it does rain the entire week before the bonfire, like, it, we might just have, like, we are okay with saying, hey, unfortunately, even though it's sunny and beautiful today, like, we gotta cancel, and we've talked about like.
Hmm. Gonna cancel or something, yeah. You know, the first five hundred can hang out, you know, until you see a car leave, and then you can let a car in if that's how it goes.
Yeah.
I'm not saying how to run it, but yeah.
I mean, it, and it's difficult, because I mean, that, that po- property up there, we have space, but all, all of, the, between the three farms, between the home farm, like,
Yeah.
I mean, we've had music festivals before I bought, um, what was Hefner up there, we had music festivals that had five thousand people at them. We have the parking for it, but again, like, over at Alta Vista, like, there is, there's twenty-five acres of parking,
Yeah, it's cool. Hmm.
but any field that you get a week's worth of rain before.
Yeah, you, yeah, yeah, unless they're bringing their tractors to come and see, so. No, they know.
And our liability comes into it, so, pushing's one.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so do you have anything else, I think?
No, it feels like there's a lot going on that maybe we didn't realize with your drainage process, so hopefully it works out.
Oh, yeah. We, it's definitely, getting this fixed is our number one priority right now. I just wanna see nice weather for a little while, so we can start making feed.
The show. Oh, yeah. Not alone.
Yeah.
Cool. Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're good.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
All right, take care. Thanks.
Okay, next day update on interim town planner process.
So how is that working out? Did anybody get a chance to see your talk to, did they come in for?
Yeah, Alex, John and I interviewed two potential candidates. Uh, and one of them, I, I guess I'm just gonna say here, named Delia Ferguson.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
In relation to the rep?
I would say no.
Okay, I don't think so.
Distant, if, 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 if it is, definitely would have to be distant.
Right.
Uh, and like I said, and I'll speak for myself, I'm pretty sure all three of us were pretty much just blown away by her. Uh, she just interviewed very, very well, she's, she sounds like, she's definitely, she's bright. Uh, I think she's.
And she had another job like that, like this before?
No, not really. She does have experience in as, as planning, but not as a, an individual town planner.
Yeah, I think she was on the staff in Belmont, which is obviously a bigger town than this.
Yeah.
Um, and she, she kinda had step ups in her career throughout. Um, and honestly, the other guy that was interviewed was, uh, rough. Um, but Delia had had an answer, a thoughtful answer. Um, she seemed to have a backbone, um, which I think is gonna be important. Um, but yeah, she seemed, she seemed smart, I mean, I, was I blown away? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a town planner, like, I don't, honestly, I, you could have the, the best town planner come in, and I don't know that I'd be like, oh my goodness, that guy was amazing, but I, I thought she seemed competent. Um, and really, we've gone through so many administrators in the last couple of years, I don't know how many very skilled, very experienced candidates are gonna come to our town and go, yeah, let me, let me sign on for a couple of years here. I, I just don't see that right now.
That, 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 you know, the big thing is, eh, at least to me, you know, who are we going to attract at this point? You know, in, in everything from just the size of the town to what we're willing to pay, to even our fiscal situation, even in town at this point, you know, you're, you're not gonna have hordes coming in, you know, to apply for the job.
Right.
Uh, and, and I, you know, I, I figure our chances of getting someone like John again are somewhere between slim and none.
Oh, we'd have to wait, hold on, we'd have to wait a while, I'm sure.
A long time.
All right.
Uh, she, she's gonna, she's gonna have to learn, she's gonna have to learn a lot fast.
Yeah, but she seems, she did seem like she was up to the task, like she wanted to, to get into it.
I think so.
Yeah, either one of you ask her if she could ride a horse or milk a cow?
I should have after, uh, yeah, after Randy's candidate night, no, I did not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No.
Wait, did he use that?
Yeah, yeah, he asked, yeah, he asked us if we'd ever milked a cow.
He did?
Oh, for Christ's sake.
So, and anyway.
Because a long time ago, I started that, and everybody wanted to know, and I said, farmers have to do a lot of little jobs all at once, because it's the way farming is, everything goes to hell in a handbag, and you should be able to handle it, and that's why.
So, anyway, uh, John did send an email to Austin recommending, uh, her for the position.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, however, the bottom line is, the appointing authority for that position is the town administrator.
Well, that's right, yeah.
And we don't have one.
Correct.
Hopefully, by the end of tonight, we do have one, uh, that's what I believe Sleck was doing right now. So, uh, I, I guess the only thing that I can say at this point is, I'll make sure that this new town administrator, as soon as he's on board, gets Delia's application, resume, and, uh, John's recommendation.
Yeah, I think, you know,
And he's to move on.
We, we trusted his expertise, as we think, I think we all agree that he was a very good town planner. Uh, and those were the two candidates, and from those two candidates, one stood way out above the other.
Yeah.
The other, the other kid is, was, was, was a young guy, and he is former employment was security task. So he had been in school the whole time, and he'd been working in security at like Children's Hospital while he was uh, going through school, and he hadn't gotten a, like a full-time job yet, and honestly, he could have been the most promising kid in the world.
Oh, wow.
He would have been right for this gig, uh.
You go to school for the right stuff?
Yes.
Okay, so he's on his way.
Yes.
He's literally gr- really fresh, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think.
We, we need to be the guinea pig.
We did. Yeah, we needed somebody who's, who's gonna be able to have good
Yeah.
uh, organizational skills and, and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
By the way, Delia is AICP.
Sorry?
She is AICP, she's certified.
Oh, yes.
She's in that, yeah, I know people.
Yeah, which, that doesn't necessarily mean a whole lot, uh, but it's, it's, it's something.
Of course.
It's, it helps.
Yeah.
She's been in the field at least, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you're saying. So, also, uh, I did.
Seth.
Say, say, say.
I wish him to say.
He's getting big.
He's the same size, he's almost four, here.
Oh. There you go, say hi to people.
Hang on, I think you want to lick your lollipop.
So, also, I did, uh, I did give her a call. Uh, after, well, I don't know, I talked with, uh, names, names, names. Who's filling in is our administrator?
Yeah, I wonder. Jamaica?
No.
No, she's staying over at John's.
I personally, I personally don't, whatever it is.
You didn't, they did not bring Gary back?
No, no.
Okay, good.
I have no idea, no, no, we, we don't have an interim.
Okay.
Don't have, but, but she's just handling day-to-day business.
All right.
Yeah.
Wow. I met her, she's been around, but I met her for the first time, there's a little tiny office over in the.
HR? Can't be HR, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who was that?
Um, only went in once to do techs.
Yeah, I know, and that's, that's it.
But if she's doing it, yeah.
But anyway, I did talk with her. And, uh, asked if I thought it would be wise to give Delia a call just to let her know the process that was gonna have to happen, because we don't have a town administrator, and that we were interested in offering her the job. So I did that, uh, she seemed very receptive.
Glad I didn't scare her off.
Yeah.
Well, you know, honestly, but, I, I think it's that, you know, it could be easily a couple of weeks before anybody's gonna even get back to her.
Well, if they're looking for a job.
And I, I felt it would be.
Yeah. Don't wanna be ghosting.
It would be a courtesy, uh, you know, to get to her. So, that, you know, that's where it stands, and I'm just gonna wait, I guess, until we have a town administrator, and I'm assuming, I, I know, I guess they have someone in mind, they, they know who they're hiring.
I think that, what, they had two of them there and they.
I don't, I don't, I don't know particularly, but at least I got the idea that they have someone particularly in mind, a person is supposedly, will be able to start immediately. And I'm just gonna find out, okay, how quick can I barge in and do this? Here, do this.
Me first.
I think the first warning is to bring coffee.
Yeah. So.
There you go. All right.
Uh.
Yeah, I remember.
That and, and offer to take her over to Randy's to, you know, milk her cow.
Milk the cow, yeah. So.
I think last time Tim was concerned, was, there was an issue with either picking someone for the planning board, was, wasn't there like, Sleck Bart didn't have us involved or something, I, I remember that a lot.
Well.
You know, and so hopefully this time we're more involved or something.
Well, when, when, when John was hired, Austin interviewed him and hired him on the spot.
Yeah, yeah.
No, nobody else.
Yeah, no one else gets to.
Nobody else even seen him, uh.
I don't know if we.
That, but worked out well.
But it worked out well, which, uh, well, sometimes you gotta. You gotta trust one of your leaders.
To do, yeah, to do that.
You know. And anyway, so. That's where we're at, uh, on that. As far as the rest of the planning board is concerned, I don't know, I haven't heard anything more about Britain. And I haven't heard anything further from Tim. Uh, cause he was gonna wait and talk with Britain. The only thing is, Britain, I know sent out, I know everybody got it, he sent out an email, his daughter's concert was tonight.
End of the year stuff, yeah.
But I am kinda wondering where, like, he was out of the country, he said, for like. Week or two, and I'm just wondering if maybe he isn't getting into some other stuff that's gonna be keeping him away.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah, work.
I I don't know, I don't know. So, uh, that's pretty much our agenda.
Neither.
No correspondence, no town planner report, that's for sure. Under, uh, discussion, not reasonably anticipated.
I've.
I'd like to bring up the the situation at one forty.
Car?
Palmagussa.
Oh, that. You may. I'll give you my two cents worth.
I have a related after that under the same developer.
Uh, I went over, visited, uh, the guy's obviously got a problem, he's losing what little backyard he has.
Yeah.
That sort of thing. He feels that it is due to. Work that Lee has done up at the top of the hill. I would. Lean to probably yes. Uh, the only thing I I just have to keep thinking to myself. I live on the opposite side of Bear Hill. My property goes right up to the steeper part of it. You know, and I had a little path bulldozed up into the back part of my ten acres of land. And I'll tell you, every spring, right down there, there is literally a river that just comes down off. That's long before Blair did anything up on top. That's that's the characteristic of the hillside.
Water has to go somewhere.
It has to go somewhere. Now, yes, it has to there, exacerbated the situation. I'd say it's very possible, very, very possible.
I don't see how it hasn't, I mean, you put impermeable impermeable surfaces somewhere. And all of a sudden, you're creating a ton of runoff, and then. That runoff adds other runoff and erosion, you create, I mean, it's like how we got the Grand Canyon eventually. But, yeah, I think, I think that that's added a lot. I I don't even know how he got approval to put. The house ten feet from a a hillside that's close to a forty-five degree slope. Um, I don't know what that is, but.
And to me, you just hit the nail on the head.
Thank you, sir.
Is the fact that he is the one that built the house there, it's his responsibility.
You know, he built both of them, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Months of sold, he gets.
Anyway, bottom line, but.
He has to deal with homeowners insurance, though.
What I would like to do is see if I can get Kevin Quinn to go out there. Take a look up at the top of the hill. And try to to make an assessment. Uh, because I don't think, I don't think anybody, any of us here is qualified.
Correct.
No.
To really say yes or no. I don't think we'll get the definite answer from Kevin either.
So.
But, uh, I think we should be doing something.
For what it's worth. I have looped in, um. Uh, Concom, cause he was, uh, Brian from Concom was there the day that I was looking at the erosion. And when all that water comes down, it pools and makes a big issue on, uh, Palmagussa. But then I believe some of it goes over and drains down into the wetlands across the street, which is a big issue.
His neighbor, the Lysgrad across the street, Callie was there.
Yeah.
And I I did not, I haven't seen evidence of it, but I guess I haven't been there at the right time.
Right, I just going off what the homeowner told me.
And I, I, it sounds to me unlikely, but apparently, hey. Can't believe they're lying, the water is literally coming down off the hill right across Palmagussa. And and down onto the other side.
I guess DPW, uh, I guess they had to put out cones and stuff last time when they were there during that big storm.
So, a- anyway, that's my idea.
I I like the idea, I I of Kevin going over there to give us two cents, I would love to hear that.
And I think, when are we looking at the acceptances for for that road? Cause I've been up there and there's. Okay, I was gonna say, there's still a lot of stuff like broken curves and all sorts of dirt that had washed off.
And to me, that's that's a whole nother subject, but yes. Uh, in the future, very, when Kevin is ready for a walk or something like that. He has issues up there or something like that, and then let's have a sidewalk.
Yes, please.
Now, there's some, there's some stuff that definitely needs to be done.
Yeah.
Well, there's one whole section of sidewalk that isn't even there.
Oh, wow.
This is true, on the right hand, well. That's where you're coming from, yeah, between two driveways, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Fire end of it there, yeah. Yeah. So, but he was, he's been moving a whole bunch of dirt out of there. There's big rock trucks out there on there, it looks like one left, one left vacant lot.
They they go past my trip, my house several, I don't know, ten, fifteen, twenty times a day.
Is it, this is gonna be on the agenda next meeting?
Yes, uh, Mr. Rosario will be in here, that's what I forgot to say, he is gonna be here on our first June meeting.
Okay.
And, uh. All I can say is he has some pretty spectacular video.
Yes, he does.
Uh, to show.
Yeah, Jamaica sent us.
Yeah, I saw the text string, yeah, holding.
Yeah, so, so he, so he would be here with his laptop.
I know.
Other than the fact up above, though, I I still say he has a a some responsibility himself.
Well, one of the things that, uh, Mr. Rosario said is, he did dig a diversion swale. Across up the top. But from what he is saying, he stopped it about twenty feet short of where he needed to. So the end of it where it is empties and breathes the water right down. You see that there?
No, I haven't clicked on him, but, I mean, yeah.
It's, it's a river.
You know, there's a lot to talk about, the fact that. He uses tree grindings to supposedly hold a hill back, and obviously. Comments that if, well, if it if it never rained from here on out, yeah, you wouldn't have a problem. You do, this is only those stormwater erosion documents, stormwater reports aren't for A and Rs, they're only for subdivisions, so. Obviously, that hill, unless you used riprap, you you know, it's. It's terrible, and to patch it isn't really gonna, you can't, I mean, you should patch it with riprap. But, uh, but he's not gonna do that.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I'm very leery.
What, you know, it's just too bad, I mean, unless you grow trees and you actually turn that hill back into a s- s- something stable with roots in it, I mean, it's.
And the trees up above are gonna erode, cause all that water's coming through, taking all the dirt.
Oh, yeah, will they hold, I mean, just.
Probably not.
You know.
Well, some.
It's. Yeah, and I mean, it's something to talk a little further, and it still makes me.
Well, with with all this rain that we have had. Is there any way to go back to some of these approved lots? Uh, especially in that Brenton development, now that we've had a ton of water, the wetlands is growing. There's, you look at the runoff there, he's doing a, he's doing a big development off to the left as you come in from Brenton. And all that hardtop, and there's a giant wetlands, like sort of lakey pond, you know what I'm talking about? Over there, and I I gotta imagine there's. It's probably not looking good over there. And I'm just worried about his impact with all the the different, um. Petroleum-based substances that are around there, all the rain that we're getting, all that runoff. What is that doing? Like, can we go with Concom through there to take a look, or is that not not a purview?
Concom has their own jurisdiction. Uh, and it's distinctly different from us, but they they theirs is ninety percent wetland. You know, if it's not directly affecting the wetland. You know, or if there are no wetlands involved, they're kind of out of the picture.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, those will grow when it's expanded, that's why the twenty-five foot that we passed for wetlands is important, cause. I know, it should have been a hundred fifty, if you ask me, but, cause it grows and shrinks and. And I watched Blair put a house being filled in the wetlands and then put the house. Right, so like, if you make it a hundred twenty-five feet, they're only gonna do seventy-five, like. You gotta do what you can. Um, on that same note, though, I, we were down, uh, right on that end of of Bear Farm by Brenton. And the amount of trash on either side of those, that road in the, like, in the actual wetlands, as you're heading into development on the right-hand side there. Ton of trash in there, the silt fence is not standing up anymore, uh, it's in the water, uh, Mick.
Yes, it's been lost.
Well, come here, buddy, I mean, they're they're supposed to keep it clean.
I got you, I got you.
You know. Developer, you know.
So what did?
You know, the the Concom should be eyeballing this thing anyways, and and telling them, hey, get in there and clean out the catch basin. Or if anything else needs to be done too, so.
So, Concom's the one who can.
Oh, yeah.
Force on that?
You betcha.
Okay.
And they should.
I know if you're talking about hilltop, I mean, we did, he did show us engineered detention ponds and stuff, so. You know, where, I don't know if on Arrowhead, if he's, obviously, there's no detention ponds. But, um, at least there's documentation of how it's gonna catch water on that hilltop.
He has a retention pond on the hill after the, after the bridge, and I've never seen a drop of water in it.
Oh, on the bottom of Bear Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've never seen a drop of water.
But the the water is supposed to go through, there's another settlement over there. And.
There is an infiltrator.
Yes.
Off of that detention pond. It goes, I'm gonna say, probably five hundred feet. Okay, and as little as these arch culverts.
Yeah, yeah.
Arch culverts, like five hundred feet long, that the drainage feeds into and dissipates. And it it's actually, it's even designed to dissipate the water, but if there is more than it can handle. It is designed so that the water actually flows up from the surface and then off to the side from it.
Interesting.
It was, it was, it was a major construction.
Right.
It really was that he put in there.
And I'd like to know if Concom has ever gone over there to check it, to make sure it's functioning.
So, cause there are manholes every.
Yes.
So far along.
And he was supposed to go in there and clean them, I I would so often, I'm not gonna search them right.
And if we could stick with my friend there for a minute. Um, we were supposed to get two hundred and fifty dollars per house. For in all states, where are we with getting any of that? I know we had talked about it and said that we needed to bring it up, I I don't know how about, how to go about getting it, I just wanna make sure that we don't.
Forget about it.
Yeah.
Cause it was supposed to go into the agricultural. La- uh, land protection account. And because it is a land protection account, I found out from the treasurer. That it will, uh, accumulate interest. Where other items, other, uh, things like supplies and stuff like that. You don't get interest in it.
Can we get missed interest payments on him? For all the money that you've been in there?
Let's, let's put it this way, uh. There were ten houses that I counted in there, and so that's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right.
I drove through there and I don't know, I I got, I think up to six more cellar holes in there, and usually, doesn't he? He, I thought he always said he will not build a house and then try to sell it, you, he wants a.
Already sold.
It's already sold. So if that's the case, that, and it's sold, that's six more at two hundred and fifty, so.
Is there some way that we can contact him about this, or file off?
I know John had, and Blair was supposed to put it into a special account.
Right, we got that email, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But.
For the first place, we didn't check with our treasurer to see if he has deposits or anything.
That's, that's it right there, that, you know, it would be nice for him to deposit it to the treasurer. She puts it into that account, and then gives us a copy of the amount that's in there.
You're just a big baby.
He is a big baby.
You're just a big baby.
Steaky breath.
Yeah, so, I mean, uh, we we do have to stay on top of it, and, uh.
We're supposed to be getting regular updates from him as well, and I think.
Monthly.
Yeah, if they don't come.
For all subdivisions.
We had some sort of a recourse where if they don't come, the building inspector could put a stop order or something. I mean, there's, there's lots of work to be done there that we can dig our teeth into. Um, to try, cause I I feel like we've let him try and.
Yeah.
Like, ah, police yourself, police yourself, and that doesn't seem to go well.
And it's, that's, that's why I I feel bad, cause Tim isn't here, cause boy, he was usually on top of stuff like that, you know. Counting them. So, is that something that we could ask? Our engineer? Can we have, have him ask, on behalf of us. Run down of what's going on there, and then have him verify or something like that, the engineer.
Verify, verify what?
Verify the monthly report that he's giving us. As far as I have done this, this, and this, and then have you really, cause we gotta check his homework.
Is that gonna cost us a hundred dollars?
I think we gotta, even if it does cost us money, we gotta look at present and future costs, cause right now, the future costs of not.
You're talking about a monthly report from the engineer.
Yeah.
We're supposed to be getting a monthly report from the developers on these different, uh.
Yeah, that's part of the special, I believe, yeah.
And that has, well, that I don't know.
I know it hasn't been done, but there's.
We did, we did for a while, we instituted it, and it just faded away.
Yeah.
Uh, mo- partly because, you know, many, many times.
Well, you have a small town with a billion homes being built, I understand how it gets swept under the rug.
But many, many times, in the middle of winter, nothing will be done.
Yeah.
I guess a- an example, uh, Bryce Lemon. I went over there like about two weeks ago, I think it was, or we could have happened before. And, uh, all I see is rusty equipment. There's nothing happening there.
Yeah, because of ECR and DEP.
I went back again yesterday, just to take another look, and nothing.
Yeah.
Uh, which, after that rain, uh, I went, I went all the way down to where that culvert is. I think I trucked in full wheel drive. It was not bad.
If you ever wanna go together, let me know.
Yeah.
Down the road.
Yeah. But you wanna, you wanna see some hillsides?
No, thank you.
Oh, my god.
Do, do you think that we should have in our subdivision rules and regulations? Anything steeper than a fifteen-degree pitch is not allowed?
I don't think we can, not on the.
Yeah, I think I brought it up before.
Jurisdiction.
This is, we can only do driveways. We can only do driveways of the road for smoke.
Well, I I tell you, you know, I I just don't like to see how much dirt was moved around in that place for kind of loud. And what the future is gonna look like for those cellar holes. Because I got funny feelings, they're gonna stack crack in here in the, in the near future.
All soft ground now that you've.
Yeah.
Put all that, all that fresh dirt.
Yeah.
You go just, just beyond that phase core down the little ways, and you look at a couple of houses, the way they're perched. And there, there's literally. I'm gonna say fifty-foot cliffs. Right.
Yeah.
Probably within twenty feet of the foundation of the house.
And how is, how is that little kid ever gonna handle anything like that?
I can't, granted, that's, there's a lot of houses, they've got fences already.
Legally, you have to have fences.
Ever by.
But how many kids, you know, oh, got a fence, boy, let me climb over that, you know, you're.
Oh, yeah.
Would have happened to Junior, uh, I don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Now, it, to me, it's, you know, do we, do we wait till somebody gets hurt, or is there any way of finding out, is there?
I wonder, I wonder if with the new town planner comes maybe a fresh set of eyes, and I'm not saying John was wrong in any way, but. Maybe she looks at it a different way and thinks that there's something we can do. Or or even sometimes, you know, you can't control that, but maybe we can control. The amount of trees he takes off to try and control where he's able to put the roads and erosion, and I don't know, maybe there's something that we can do, but. When they tell you no, pivot just a little bit to the side and try there.
Okay, so anyway, uh, by by the way, what I am kinda thinking is, since Mr. Rosario is coming in for the next meeting. I don't think I wanna invite Lee at the same time. for the next meeting, I don't think I wanna invite Lee at the same time. Cause all we'll end up is a back and forth.
Yeah, no, I don't think so either.
So, once we get a, a better handle on what his situation is, if we feel that there's something we can do, then, then the half clear.
Especially if you, if you have the engineer go up above and take a look and see if.
I will call in tomorrow and see if I can set up.
I think that's a good idea. That'd be great.
Makes sense if the guy's saying it's not doing enough coverage to really stop anything. And he's not the only house. I think he has a house next door.
The house next door has, I guess, not as bad, but definitely has some.
Yeah, so I mean, just to.
Yeah, and.
Protect two houses is nice enough, I guess.
I, I'm a little bit surprised. He should be used to this, because even if you go down to, what is it now, the? I wanna say the second house actually on Brenton. Right there, by the old driveway that went up to Ellie's place. He ended up putting in a major swale for that guy, because he was losing his backyard.
Yeah.
And, you know, a riprap rock and the drain and everything right down to Brenton.
Yeah.
So I'm kinda surprised he wouldn't do a little bit more, apparently he's.
Well, the main problem, yeah, I don't think.
Well, see, if, if, if Mr. Blair is convinced that he hasn't really done anything wrong.
Oh, yeah, he's not.
I've gotten that much, yes. I've understood that part.
That's it, and, uh.
It's more of a charity for him to do the work and to, to fix it.
Unfortunately.
Is that, that's how you feel right now?
No, it's just a slight, um.
I was gonna say, cause, I mean, the one thing is, is that, that.
Positive than either of you.
He, the homeowner does have copious notes and does have a homeowner's insurance policy.
Well, he's got text messages going years. It's more than two years worth of conversation.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not like he brought it up because of one story.
No, and at least the way I read it is.
I'll get to it, I'll get to it.
The interaction on his side has been very civil.
True.
Towards Mr. Blair. Uh, but, I don't know, I, I would like to think that we will be able to persuade Mr. Blair to do something, uh.
I hope so.
But I don't think we're gonna get him to repair damages down below.
Just keep in mind what his behavior has been in the past and the things that he has. The money that we have signed away and he's just gone, ah. Like, I, I fully understand that's perfectly legal, I guess, but I would never do business with that person again if that was ever up to me. And I think the town needs to start taking a hard stand.
You know, you can, you could divert the wire, but the wire's gonna go somewhere.
It's still gonna be the same amount of water.
Have to go somewhere. Yeah, it's still gonna be the same amount, it's just where does it go and, you know. I think if you can ask Mr. Quinn, you know, is there best, you know, best, best practices for this?
Okay, uh, last thing, I don't think it ever got really brought up. CMRPC annual dinner meeting. Uh, who's interested or is anybody interested in going?
How far away is it? Oh, not far.
Salem Cross Inn.
Yeah, not, um, date wise, I forget, is it?
It's June twenty-fourth. Let me see, no. Come on.
I'm gonna know.
There you should go though.
June twelfth.
June twelfth, ooh, that, that quick.
Yep, actually June twelfth and you have to reply by, uh, June first.
Yeah, Monday's, yeah, week. I don't mind going.
I don't mind, I don't mind going. Let's put it this way, uh, um, the wife says that you're not driving though, are you? I don't know.
I'll drive you guys.
So there you go. You're a yes, I think I'm a yes.
I'll, I'll put, put me as a negative.
Well, um.
But saying let us know by June first.
Okay, I don't know if I can register for all of us. I think it should be.
Individual, right?
What, do you all have the email?
Yeah, yeah, I've seen.
I'll, I'll respond to the email probably tomorrow after I talk with all of them.
Oh, you're not, oh, okay.
I think it's individual, each person has a son.
Oh, I, oh, that's right too, because we have to pay for it.
No, it's free. That, that's, that's a change. It used to cost.
Yeah, okay.
It's free.
It's free.
Yeah.
Did I hear you say forty mil?
Yes, Salem Cross usually puts on a pretty good dinner.
Yeah, alright, that's.
Nowadays, free is a great word.
Yeah.
I don't mind doing that and I would also like to find out where the hell is our master plan? Where's our open space and where is our road?
Watch it.
Yeah, no, all the roads were, were laid out, but.
Although the roadmap.
The roadmap, but haven't seen any of it. Heard discussions about it, but that's all.
And all, this, this whole open space thing is driving me bananas.
Yeah, well.
I don't know, the, the last I heard, CMRPC was looking for some money to finish it.
To finish it or some time. I thought John was gonna give them some of our time.
Be fairly honest with you, I'd take money out of our administrative account. To get it to finish it. What I mean, this, this is.
This is, this is.
We're going on three years now?
Yeah.
What, what I mean?
We'll be at the next master plan, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say it was the, uh, twenty-two master plan, uh, twenty-twenty-three master plan.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-four.
I, I want the first master plan that we had done where Norm has, I think it's in there, that the town has to put in a bypass.
Yeah, Route forty-nine.
Because, uh, I tell you, we can have a bypass put in and bypass Holden all together. It'd be beautiful.
I went in to get gas and holding today, this afternoon, coming back, oh my god.
Yeah.
And what it was just.
In the afternoon, yeah.
It was, it was slow all the way to the center of our land.
Yeah, it was terrible. And to me, you know, I don't know how many times I told the select board, why don't you get cameras on the, on, on intersections? And if somebody doesn't stop, you know, they get fined. Oh, we can't do that. We can't do that. We can't do that.
I just wonder what they got all the counters out for right now.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, the traffic study.
It's traffic study, all right, but the, the, well, that's just it, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's either just a reference five years ago versus whatever, you know.
And most of them say, no, you don't need a traffic plan, this is a little problem.
Yeah, I got news for you. Well, the latest thing that I, I've, uh.
What's whether we can.
Seen from Central Mass is that how would you like to have a, a drone fly over difficult areas? And mapped out and pitches and things like that. Oh, they're trying to push the drone thing now. Where the hell's our own drone?
We have a rotary in the center of town.
Uh, it's still in the phase of being, uh, written up, you might say. Let's put it this way, you know, with the seven million for the rotary on Pleasant Dale. And one twenty-two, um, to me, that's.
I'd have to say if you're gonna pick which location to do first, I think the center would be.
Yeah.
I would say more important, but it, it would cause a greater effect.
It would, but to me, for crying out loud, a rotary would not be, uh, sufficient enough in front of Dunkin' Donuts. It's, it's too much.
I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a space to really do it.
There isn't. Well, I shouldn't say that because better than half of the common is MassDOTs.
Yeah.
No, that's one thing, but, you know, when I told the select board, do you know you don't own all the common? Huh? And the Nada says, yeah, he looked it up on the map and it. It, yeah, it was, because we were supposed to ban the capital of Massachusetts. And because when they came out here, they got stuck, was eliminated, but already we had.
Rod right away.
Ten rod right away easement through the center of town.
Which is, how much is it, a hundred feet or?
It's a hundred, it's sixteen feet per rod, so, sixteen and a half feet, excuse me, sixteen and a half feet per rod, so it's a hundred.
That's how wide the road would be.
Yeah, well, the easement is, you can have whatever you want in that.
Yeah.
And that goes, I think, almost all the way up to Glenwood.
Yes, just prior to Glenwood, there's a concrete wall there and that's where it's supposed to come back in, right there, right in there. And down here where Pleasant Dale is, is where it shrinks down there. And I was gonna say, um, Wachusett Street, I was gonna tell them, but let them find out themselves. I asked at a selectman's meeting, um, New England had a power lines going through a tree. I said, why don't you make, they wanna put a pole up next to it or something like that. And I says, make it part of their job to take that tree down. Well, we don't know if it's in the easement. Give me a freaking break. I went down there, the, where the tree was, the easement was six feet beyond it. So it's sixty feet of easement for Wachusett Street, so there's plenty of room for down there where really open it up.
So, anything else to come before the board?
Uh, I have, let's just say that, um, I don't know where it's gonna go. Um, but it's, watch as it rode. We finally, uh, got a lawyer, because town council would not open their mouth to us at all, period. And with all the facts that we found and we gave to the lawyer and he says, what? And he's supposed to get back to us on how it might proceed. So I'm just gonna say at the moment, um, things, I, I'm hoping things are gonna change. Because of what happened in nineteen fifty-six.
We're talking about Wachusett Street versus Wachusett Road?
Correct.
Where they used to string sap lines and all that stuff?
And prior to that, my old man had a bulldozer down through there, yeah.
Town's not touching that.
And not only that, for crying out loud, in nineteen fifty-six, the county commissioner moved the road to a street. And that's when the bounds slapped together and it was Mr. Crenster's property at the time. Peggy's father and mother at the time, and that was fifty-six. Billy's Otley did not start going out with Peggy until nineteen sixty, in sixty-two, they got married.
Getting everyone to stare, but I like it.
Yeah.
No, but honestly, I mean, we're, we're talking about road acceptances and whether or not we have the funds to, to take that on. Let alone take something that presumably was a road and then went out of use and had all sorts of lines strung across and all that stuff. And then a developer comes in and runs his equipment up there and now cannot do that anymore because of the damage done. That is in no way, shape on the town, in my opinion.
It is not on the town, because our, uh, a town DPW and town administrator, it took them three times with emails to MassDOT to bring Chapter Ninety back to Wachusett Road. The first time they pushed crazy like, and MassDOT came back and showed going up to Lila Tedge or up to Hefe Project at the time. Squawked again for crying out loud, Gary, Gary did it to him and they moved it and showed it going up to Overlook. Gary got mad and screamed at him for crying out loud, and then the last time they showed where they moved it back to and put the green road back to Wachusett, where Wachusett Road was. So we have evidence that he forced them to do that, even though the road was moved in nineteen fifty-six. This was, uh, two thousand something.
Well, and if the town has any way to not approve that, they should, cause essentially you would be paying to build a road so that somebody could build houses that you now need to pay to have those children go to school. Those ta- houses are not gonna cover those taxes, so you are paying for a road to get to somewhere where you will then have to pay for their kids to go to school as a town.
Anyways.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Five, seven fifty-five.